This is the first opportunity for public comment. A number of the public may address the floor briefly for up to three minutes.
Just a couple of quick updates I wanted to thank Clark Construction and K-Sat. We had a board tour of the construction sites, particularly the middle school. Well, there's a lot of work to be done. It's nice to see that things are kind of coming together. We're excited about having access to all of those buildings by the 28th. So we'll keep an eye on that as we move forward. This time of year is a busy time of year for school administration. We've had another administration meeting today, laying out the plans for the coming year. And I will say that it's great to see the activity in the building. I applaud our buildings grounds, even transportation. I saw a lot of bus drivers in getting ready for their bids and week that's coming up. So it's an active place to be right now in senior schools. So we're excited. We're inside of a month for school, so here it comes. I want to remind people that on the 30th, we'll be doing our kickoff in the morning. The board has invited us, sent that email out today. The evening of the 30th at 5:00, we are doing open houses, but at 5:00 at Harvest Elementary, there'll be a ribbon cutting dedicating the patio or recognition area in front honoring the 15th anniversary of that building. So it's a great fundraising opportunity. A&amp;H was very supportive of that. We appreciate that and the parents and the community around Harvest to really want to prove the look and feel of that building, but also to recognize the fact that it's been there for quite a while. Both the current principal and the first principal are here tonight to be able to attend this. And then school starts on the 5th, so this will be our last official board meeting before school begins. So we're excited to get the 17, 18 school year. It's all for sure the kids are ready. It's a big mix for views about that.
Yeah, we had a foundation meeting this morning and they have been busy this summer. They've been doing all kinds of stuff to get ready for some fall events. First one is they will be down at the Cup Bradley Day downtown. They also have a patio with the Hall of Fame on their tailgate will be September 15th. The Hall of Fame banquet on September 16th. And then on October 30th, they will be kicking off the 30th anniversary of the foundation. So it's a big year for them. It's a busy time. One of the other exciting things they're doing is expanding the grant program from teachers grants to schoolwide grants and student grants. And so that's an exciting way to give back and they've got a record number of corporate sponsors this year. So that's exciting that the community is pulling together to do great things for the kids here in city. So I'm thanking them for all their efforts that they give.
I'd like to acknowledge all the administrator staff, anyone in the district who's been traveling, going to conferences and having retreats and reading clubs and stuff. I mean, it seems like Twitter's just as busy this summer as it is during the school year. So I appreciate all your efforts to learn things and get better, to make our students learn better. So it's been crazy out there. I don't think Teresa's been home since school actually. It seems like there's always someone or something. And happy birthday to trustee debate tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. It's a big one. They're all big now. If I can add too, speaking about the busyness, I was up in Grand Rapids yesterday at a conference called Mind Share. It runs by McCall, Michigan Association of Computer Users in Vernon. And first person to greet me at the door was Teresa Stager. And we are everywhere. And through conversations and side tables and so forth, we, Celine Airy Schools was generally highly praised and that we have a lot to be proud of. We are exceptional among our peers across the state, so we never sleep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
All favor.
All right.
Skipper, course, 2017 state champion baseball team.
I'd like to invite Scott Tyson and the folks that are with him, want to come up to the podium. Just an opportunity for us publicly to congratulate Coach Tyson and really the entire Celine baseball program. As you know, the program itself has been extremely successful from a competitive wins and losses standpoint, from the standpoint of producing student athletes that will want to compete at the collegiate level, but also a team that we really, I think, are, can be proud of off the field and represents us in a very positive way. And so for them to kind of realize that the idea of winning that state title, winning that last game of the season. So if you get the opportunity to do that and this team competed and treated well, we do. So Tiago, tell me a little, maybe a couple of your favorite memories of the season. Who's with you tonight?
Yeah, first off, our introductions. And before I do, I want to just thank you for recognizing the accomplishment that the team has made and the sacrifices that the kids have made, the parents, the coaches. And I really appreciate being invited to formally be recognized for just something that we've tried to do for so many years and finally to get there, to get to the point where you feel like you may never do it. And at some point, you get to come to peace with it, that it's okay. Give them one last chance here with this group and then the kickoff. It's just, you know, something that's very special for us and for our community members and just another thing to add to the list of all the great things we can be proud of in our city. So Coach, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves and then we'll say a couple of names.
Coach Josh Reeves. I've been with the program one way or another with Scott for 12 years, four years with the varsity program. Also teach math in high school, work with the catchers and the calling fishes as far as the game changes.
I'm Zach Johnson. I play centerfield.
Ryan Polley, senior outfielder. I play left.
Joe Weldon, fifth year in Celine. Pete with Pleasant Ridge, coach of pitchers, coach for baseball.
Jake Bornham, I played shortstop for the organization.
Scott, yes, a couple of my favorite memories. You know, there's a lot of them when you win 39 games, a lot of great memories. And, you know, when you win, there's a lot of things that produce a lot of smiles. But, you know, a couple of things that stand out, we went up to a Hudsonville tournament and played some of the better teams in the state with Stevenson and Hudsonville and who's the other? Howell and ended up winning that tournament. But, you know, one thing that stood out in my mind when we left the tournament was, and it always makes you proud of the coach, whether you win or lose, when one of the opposing coaches, opposing side, he just says, you know, I really, really like the way you guys play and the way you handle yourself. Got to the game, the whole game. So that, you know, it kind of sends a message that what we're doing is getting through to the kids in a bigger sense, not just about scoring more rounds than the opponent. It's about learning some other life lessons along the way, whether you win or lose. It's nice to hear those things. But I always said, I wanted to see our kids dogpile at Michigan City University. And then that final lot was me and to see those kids aisle on each other. It was just, I'll never forget it. So that is top, top memory about my entire career.
Well, congratulations. Bringing you here tonight, we talked about this right after it happened, about finding a time. There've been a couple of things that have happened in between that time and you need to go back to the office after this meeting now. Because I don't know if you want to tell the board a little bit about how, but your first few days as the athletic director.
Well, yeah. It's, you know, it's a great change for me from a professional standpoint, just because I think in any confession, you do something for long enough and you feel like, you know, what could be next, what could be your other challenge, what could be something new. And someone made the comment, the emails and the phone messages are kind of like the ocean. They just keep rolling in. You better keep up on it. I've learned that in a hurry. But I think I'm going to enjoy trying to, maybe try to pass out a few things I've learned in all the years of coaching to some of our younger coaches and enjoy watching our kids in a different capacity.
Sure. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it. Give me a good round of applause. Yeah, just wanted to take the opportunity to briefly touch on it. I shared the document with you, it's, you know, it's 40 slides or so of the school quality survey that we do and done for several years. And there's a lot of data in this survey that we look at and I wanted to just touch on a couple of key points that I find, and you can look through it and if you have questions for me afterwards or in the coming weeks, feel free to. One thing I just enjoy and looking at in mind is page four, the top slide, the slide from seven. But it's kind of the overall, how would you rate the quality of our school? Parents, 97%, 97% say good or excellent or good, including almost 70%. Seven out of 10 parents, over 1300 parents told us how indicated that they call me an excellent school staff. 96% again, very high. And even our students, 30 and 54, 84% of our students are, have a real positive feeling in terms of the quality of their schooling. I think, one, it's great when you have one alignment like that. And certainly when we talk to the folks in K-HO insight and give this, give this same school quality survey across the country to literally thousands of school districts that are, the perceptions of our district internally continue to rank very highly. And I think that's, it really provides for a great environment. Remember, one of our strategic framework goals is to identify, to make sure that we're the type of district where kids want to come to learn, families want to send their students and our staff are comfortable in the environments that they're in. And I think we're working hard to achieve that. That being said, any part of the continuing and the focus on excellence, the cornerstone of that is that we're always trying to improve and the continuous improvement. So if you get to the back, it is page 17 for me, but we really do look at what are the areas where we score the highest within each of these areas, the parents, students and staff. And then what are some of the lowest ones? And, you know, healthy food across the country, they said that's always the number one. But one of the key areas that we've identified, and we've identified it through this survey, and then Assistant Superintendent Lodge, Principal Clecher and Raff, as well as Assistant Principal Stager, had the opportunity to really dive into what we call a problem of practice, looking at how do we align both parents and students have the sense that the content that we're teaching doesn't necessarily tie directly to a quote, quote, "real life" or "real world." And so when we talk about authentic learning experiences, I think about the activity. I see a lot of what I consider to be authentic learning experiences, but we really want to improve our ability to tie what's going on in our classrooms to the types of things that our students are going to face beyond the classroom. We've talked about wanting to build lifelong learners. We know that we need to engage them in their learning early on. If students develop a love of learning while they're in our school district, the idea that they'll continue to learn throughout their life regardless of their chosen path in terms of career or college, it's a key lever for us in terms of what I would consider to be a leading indicator relative to their future success. And so again, Mr. Assistant Superintendent Lodge and the team have really started to dive into that and try to break that down in terms of how do we go about that. We're going to be having some focus groups with students, trying to get their feedback, focus groups with families to kind of determine what do they consider to be relevant learning experiences. Ties right into what we're trying to do with project-based learning and 4Cs and our compass. And so we're seeing a great deal of alignment there, but certainly an area that we've identified through this survey for areas of improvement. Continue to be other areas, we want to look at how we communicate relative to student discipline and some other areas. There's also, you know, if you look year to year, I don't get too caught up in the year to year stuff. I've got now have some trend data, I'm trying to pull that into a bigger file so I can see if there are any multi-year trends to try to determine where that goes. But I encourage you to take a look at this information if you have specific questions. Certainly we'd like the answer, but maybe if you have, if a few people have specific questions, we can build some agenda items moving forward around those areas. Because again, our focus isn't necessarily, quote, quote, "where are we low?" We want to make sure we're looking at those areas. If we're going to improve and we want to focus on excellence, we have to be ready to address the areas that we have for improvements.
Was there comments in the survey where they could be?
Yeah, there was a significant amount of verbatim comments. Actually, we provided those for Steve and the team to look through. And again, the staff, parents and students. Students, there's not a lot of verbatim, but parents, there's a lot of verbatim comments.
Well, and I guess, I guess the students go through the system, how do I call it? The school system, I think they might be a little jaded because their scores are always a little lower than the parents and the staff. And I'm just curious, I was, I guess, curious if they gave specific comments on why they may have done something higher or lower.
I didn't see, I didn't see a lot of specific comments from the students. So I will say that our student feedback, while lower than our parents and staff, are higher than other student feedback in other communities. There's somebody said that. The other, so there's that, the other point to note, there were a couple of ones that moved and it was great to hear because I do get a fair amount of student complaints about or expressed concerns, it could be on Twitter about our internet access and everything. But if you look at our technology and access technology scores both for our parents and our students is very high. And then also our safety, I don't want to say scores, but our safety feedback went up. And so I do think they're starting to see, okay, we've made significant investments in the area of safety and security. We've seen a little bit of movement there and investments in technology and our push. I think their perceptions and the reality is that students and staff feel like they have access to the tools necessary to be successful, which again, I think is not, what I've been given told is not the case in other communities. Yeah, we'll look at that. We'll visit that throughout the year.
I see the ground was one of the lower ranking indicators, so I'm kind of curious how that'll show up next year.
And it's interesting, the parents' perceptions of our, are higher than our staff perception. So it's one of those things, I don't know if you, level of expectations are, or, and then heating and cooling is one that typically we'll get a lot of feedback on the staff one about temperature, ability to control temperatures. And that's one we invest heavily in. So I hope to see a move in there, right?
Positive. Yeah, exactly. Yep. Oh, with the new grounds, right, right, and stuff like that.
You had a recommended motion to the memorandum authorizing for President Austin and Secretary Deli to execute the superintendent contract extension effective July 1st, 2017 until 30th, 2022. So move?
Support.
Discussion. All favor. All right. Motion carries six to. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. And recommend motion to approve the reappointment of Jim Hecht, Barry Lidsley, Amy McGovern and Chris Michalak as the CARES advisory board for a two-year term expiration on July 1st, 2019. So move?
Second.
Discussion. All favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries six to. And recommend motion to approve the purchase of swing starting platforms, backstroke starting devices from the Lifeguard Store, Normal, Illinois for the amount $33,110 as an advice assistant superintendent. So move?
So we did go out with a bid. We received five valid bids. Four of them were very close in price and Sammy Stafford and Jeff Brooks from the Athletics Department reviewed the bids and decided that the Lifeguard Store, which was the low bid, met our needs, met the specifications. The starting platforms just drop in to our current arrangement. They're hoping that they'll all be in early in September, get this order placed around.
All right. Opposed? And recommend motion to approve the purchase of an LED video display school board from Dick Chops, Brookings, South Dakota for the amount of $194,936.50 as submitted by assistant superintendent. So move? Support.
I'll touch on this one. So the, as you know, it's been our plan to, to fund this coming summer to be involved with kind of the turf and kind of some stadium renovations related to our next steps. The current scoreboard we have there, the second scoreboard that's been part of the stadium, the original scoreboard was on the team room. There was a opportunity to get an additional scoreboard or a new scoreboard there, probably a better scoreboard for that facility through a third party, through Side Effects, which is a company that will kind of quote, quote, "give you the board in order to then provide advertising and share in that revenue." One of the things that we've learned through that process is that there is a market for revenue on that board and they've been very successful in selling ads and generating income and revenue on that board, well in excess of the cost of that board had we had the money at the time to buy that board. And so one of the plans we've had, really we focused on next year was to move in this direction of developing and getting a new scoreboard that we would then be managing in terms of the ad sales on that. Then the next step is that many districts of our size count where we've moved to basically what is a video board. And so if you were to picture this when it's not in use, it is literally just a black screen that will be up there, much like a billboard, a digital billboard that does not have an image displayed on it. And then when it turns on, for the vast majority of events, it will simply be a scoreboard as well. You've got the image or display an image of a board. It does allow for video displays. And so you have the opportunity, not only for digital display advertising, but also for video content, depending on the type of event. It could be things along the lines of replays, highlights, it could be things highlighting different aspects of our student performances. Nate Bush and Chase Stanton are very excited about the opportunity to be able to put some, some content up there that they've been doing, again, to continue to expand, the folks that get to see what they and their students are doing. And ultimately for us, it's an opportunity to continue to kind of sell the Celine brand as it relates to, again, offset the cost of that over time with the scoreboard. The decision to move forward this year in a relatively tight window was predicated on the support of the Oregon Football Club. It's a parent, a 501(c)(3) parent organization that essentially is, has said, "we want to have this opportunity for our student athletes to be able to have this type of display board at the stadium." And it pledged $96,000 over the next six years in order to do this. Essentially, half the cost of this is underwritten by the Oregon Football Club and again, has that parent boost to support that. So we wanted to leverage that. That was a generous offer, an opportunity to improve the environment and again, at 50% of the cost from that organization. Conversely, we've now negotiated with Side Effects to take over that ad sales area. And I passed out, in addition to the letter from the Oregon Football Club, I passed out kind of the packaging, the advertising package that we were putting together to be able to begin to look at display ads, different segments in terms of video advertising and then ultimately to trust and generate. So we see this not only, while certainly the cost upfront, an opportunity for us to not only, much like Side Effects has done over time, is to recoup the cost of putting this type of piece of equipment in, but also making a revenue generating center for us moving forward. I noted in the memo, I think Assistant Superintendent Warner noted in the memo, in addition, could be other events at the stadium. We've talked about doing movie nights, other types of broadcast events there. And then a graduation and discussions with Nate Bush and Chase about having a video camera located near the stage that would then project the image of the student getting the diploma on kind of the big screen, similar to the type of environment that's created at Eastern Michigan University where you may be seated far away from the stadium, but you can be up close and get a very good shot of your son or daughter receiving their diploma and walking across the stage as a Celine graduate. So there's a lot of parts to this, I think. And again, it would have been nice from my perspective to deal with this next year, but leveraging that very generous opportunity, I think we should move forward.
Two questions. When would it be installed?
It is going to be installed between now and September 1st, the first home event at the stadium.
Second question. Where are the controls for this going to be located? Because hypothetically, say some kid's broken into the stadium and turned on the lights or something.
Yep.
I mean, I don't think that ever happens, but if it were to happen, would they have access to it?
The controls would be in the press box, essentially aligned into the press box. That being said, inside the press box, there is an additional secure area where the device would be, because essentially it's a board. That board is not, even now, there's a board that does it. That board is not left in the press box area. It's then locked in another safe area. Now, in theory, could they somehow break into that? In theory, yeah.
Very exciting.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't want to keep it under lock and key. One of the things, and if you've been to a lot of events last, the last couple of years, the performance of the existing scoreboard deteriorated. And in fact, there were sometimes various game flaws. That's never been a hardwired, that's always been a wireless only device. This one will be hardwired in. So we're running conduit up to the, to the press box area to be able to manage that, as well as send some conduit to Nate Bush. And, you know, there's a, Mr. Bush, there's a shed underneath the stadium now where a lot of the video production takes place at major events and that'll be part of it. In addition to, you know, Mr. Bush has committed, you know, the Friday night aspect of a football game lends itself very well for filming. Frankly, the students have time after school to get set up for it and then they don't have to be to school the next day to, when they're late, tearing it down. They've committed to doing additional games, they're picking, working with Athletic Director Tyson to pick additional games, to video those, as well as then kind of be able to leverage that. So yes, the football program and their generous support, they got it installed and they'll certainly benefit from it. But we've built an opportunity to really highlight some of our other programs as well and give those student athletes an opportunity to be up on the big screen during their events.
Why just to think of Karen's thing? So this is a relatively expensive piece of equipment sitting in the middle of the field. Do we have a camera out on the field that, for security reasons? I mean...
We do, we have a camera right now that's on the team room. We wouldn't, the way it sits now, there would not be a camera that should...
No, we actually, this year we're putting five. Maybe they were installed.
They already can be in other areas.
I'm just thinking, not that anyone would break into the stadium and that's what I've seen. So where is the existing scoreboard going to go? To the track field or do we have...
We've talked about, not necessarily, one, the track field scoreboard has been recently refurbished. In fact, probably from a structural standpoint and performance standpoint, is a better scoreboard than the one we have now. Brett and Mr. Clary and I talked about that right now. So what value does the scoreboard have? There's the frame, it might have some value in it. We talked about, do we want to save it? Do we put it in storage and potentially, we've talked about, literally, we could put it on Craigslist and try and sell it. It doesn't necessarily have value. The next step, if we just say, hey, let's put it on a field that doesn't currently have a scoreboard, there's not a field right now that needs a scoreboard in such a way we would be built, but that size of scoreboard, pay to have it installed, pay to run it, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Because now we're incurring an additional expense just because we have an actual scoreboard. So we've thought a lot about what is our best option for that.
What's the life expectancy?
Actually, I reached a firm with electronics and Jeff's, for 20 years, it's a 20-year life expectancy on the board. So certainly over time, if we were to meet our, kind of our mid-level goals in terms of ad sales, it would more than pay for it, particularly after the Michigan Football Club.
Yeah, with the price tag, the ability to create revenue from it, or at least get payback on it is...
Had we not had the experience with Side Effects that we've had, I would be probably more skeptical in terms of our ability to generate revenue from it, having seen Side Effects more than pay, maybe three or four times pay for the scoreboard that they put up for us and the significant cut that they take from that. The idea that we could kind of seed fund this and then 100% of the revenue generated stays in our community, I think that's a real win for us long-term.
Did we check with the Michigan High School faculty? People about running replays?
Mr. Ellis had a similar...
We did this in Novi before I came here, it's like most of 10 years now. There are no issues with that at all. The officials don't necessarily like the rules, but there are no issues with that. And in fairness, I think we here in Celine are light years ahead of where the staff was in Novi when we did this in terms of having a crew like Mr. Bush and Mr. Stanton to come help out. That replay component happens a lot faster than you might think. Watching a game on TV is very difficult to have a play, in particular what we do offensively in football, to do a replay 15 seconds later. So no issues with the part to, probably most of the replays, the first couple of weeks.
Right, yeah. And our, I don't know that we really want to get the true replay, but we could do a quick first half highlight thing after the band's done playing and something like that. I composed, when fighter comes down, there are a couple of key plays against fighter. Maybe we did some previous year's highlights or something, you know. There's a run back by Gay Chairman I'd like to show before the start of the play.
Yeah, we did kind of for that pregame component where there's just a lot of activity in the stadium. We did kind of highlights would show from the week. So kind of a Michigan replay if you were, where we took, and we have that happening right now where our students are filming those kinds of events. We just put that previous week's highlights up there so that kids who don't compete in that stadium, who might compete in the pool or water pool or field, might have the opportunity to have their images up there as well. And that was very, very popular with parents.
We talked about, and I'm sorry about this, the idea like we do student of the month at elementary level, to have them come out and have, and we do draw a large browser Friday night to have, you know, the Puzzle Ridge, you know, kids get up and introduce themselves as the student of the month, have really receive that kind of new recognition. I think for families, it's a great opportunity for us to really leverage the fact that we do have a one-night school town where we have a lot of people come to the event and celebrate. Celine Airy Schools, not just what's going on on the field, but also for us to engage them in a better way.
And there's always Kiss Cam.
So there are several other high schools in Michigan and the Bahamas.
Yeah, there are a lot more now than we're willing to person this 10-year group. It's pretty popular and that, but yeah, it's become more of a problem. And even with where Coach Ballba came from, the Bahamas, before he came to the city.
This will be a long-term issue for us.
Questions?
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Can I recommend a motion to approve the resolution to hold a special election on November seventh, two thousand seventeen, to levy a sinking fund millage not to exceed point three five mils for a period of ten years, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-seven, and to levy a recreational millage not to exceed point five mils for the period of ten years, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-seven, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent.
So move?
Support. I'll, I'll jump in on this one. As you know, there have been some changes in the types of purchases and types of expenditures that are allowable under the sinking fund law, and so what we are proposing, because there is an existing countywide election, this year will be the right year to allow us to put this issue really fundamentally, it's, it's frankly almost a renewal of what we've been, again, the numbers are the same numbers that were approved in two thousand nine, in front of the voters for them to determine whether or not they want to extend it another ten years, allow us to use it for end-use technology as well as safety and security, as we then continue to support the areas as identified in Recreation Village or CARES Village. Again, I would want to note that this is very similar to what we did in two thousand and nine. The original kind of, CARES Village was passed in two thousand, and it was for two thousand to two thousand and ten. In two thousand and nine, the district, we were compelled to try and put a sinking fund on the ballot, and instead of raising for sinking fund, we decided to kind of redistribute those funds, and we went for a CARES village and a recreational village and a sinking fund in two thousand and nine. In theory, we could have levied the point eight five as well as the point five, point three five. Certainly, we did not do that as a board, the board simply chose to levy the new dollar figure in, in the appropriate ways. This was a very similar, the reason we're going out now is a free election and to access these recent changes in legislation, and we would, if approved, we would levy this one and forego one year of the existing CARES sinking fund, which is how we've decided to do this.
Finally, a minute last night, and I was going to say, we discussed this as well, we approved this as well.
I mean, we can't do a renewal because of the legislation requires us to, in order to use the new, new areas we have to go over.
So the numbers are back to the same as the original, because they shifted a little because of that.
Correct. What we're asking for, similar to two thousand, we're asking for what was approved for to be, I would say re-approved, we don't, we have not used the rollback number. It's been sliding, it's pretty slight.
Point three four six one or something, versus point three five, and we're expecting, and there's the Washtenaw County Village.
Washtenaw County is putting a, the special education rule will be on, so they'll cover the cost of the election, but there will be two, in addition, within our, our, to reference, there's also a city election, this is council, that's election, those are the three things. The city, yeah, the, the entities, the government, the taxing entities have until August fifteenth, so there could be something in the next week. There was talk of a different county, whether it be public safety or even a transportation thing.
Washtenaw County.
But I don't know that they approved that.
Discussion.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Can I recommend a motion to approve the swap management plan dated in July first, two thousand seventeen, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent.
So move?
Support.
So our swap agreement needs to be repicked annually, and then they updated as needed, there were, were some minor changes in language, and they updated the risk profile. It's reviewed by Echo Financial, which is our swap manager, PFM, which is our financial manager, and also by Tru Law Firm, so they've all had their eyes on it. Our position has improved over the last year, and what that means is if we were to get out of the swap and refund the bonds in a different way, a year ago, that would have cost us about ten point nine million, and if we did it at this point, it would be about six point two million dollars, so we've improved our position. Echo Financial and, do you look at that? And, you know, they're looking at, is there a point where it will make sense to refund the bonds, and it would save us money to refund the bonds and go just a flat fixed-rate situation like we have with our other two bond issues?
But they're recommending it continue.
Yes.
Janice, with many of these swap arrangements, they, they tie the interest rates to a live war, and the live war is being phased out over the next few years, to know whether our swaps are, are going to have one, or how, I mean, everyone being part of this group is going to have to...
Yeah, sure.
I, I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Can I recommend a motion to approve the purchase of fifty iPads and eighty-one iPad minis for special education students and staff of Niantic in the amount of forty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent.
Support.
So Monica Garcia, the Director's Student Services, introduced them this summer and determined the need for these items, they will be used in all the buildings throughout the district, so it, break it down, my building is not that many devices, and it, it does come in at the registered price, so you do not have to allocate it.
Just clues to run in the covers?
The covers are being paid for at the special education budget.
The special education budget also pays for assistant technology, whatever they need.
The VMs and all, yes.
Just a little curious why eighty-one, the new thing, eighty or...
Um, I don't know exactly, but they, they determined the number that were needed.
Okay. Round up, round up.
Is it a discount?
Discount, I think they go as a discount, get one more.
Yeah.
Eighty, a hundred, they come, they come in packs of ten, and then there was one more, so I'm not sure what.
Good to go.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Can I recommend a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. B, approval of payment of general fund accounts payable of August eighth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of one million thirty-seven dollars, one million thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents. C, approval of payments of the bad fund accounts payable of August eighth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of four million nine hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents. D, receipt file August, particular bank resources.
Support.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. And I'm skipping to the next agenda.
We will be, the next agenda is an official board meeting will be on Tuesday, September the twelfth, so we'll be talking about the start of the school year. We do have a board retreat coming up on the twenty-second. Safety and security.
Will we be meeting our new teachers that evening or a little later?
It'll be the twelfth, I think, is the plan.
Yes.
So we have a new staff orientation date is the twenty-eighth. Since you've had this, where was the new staff, trigger that in?
And we will be delivering.
On the twelfth, we'll be delivering. Okay. Next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty PM in the Leveling School Media Center. Can I recommend a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand seventeen, at seven ten?
Seven.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.